All right, seven o'clock, so the Monday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, City of Andalia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we have no minutes to approve, nor do we have any communications, petitions, and awards. We also do not have a public hearing. So that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So at this time, I'd like to welcome any comments from any interested citizen. And as you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. We further ask that you speak to counsel in an etiquette and a form of communicating with respect to all others. And as a courtesy, please try to stay on topic with your statements while you address counsel. And as a reminder, this is not a forum for debate or arguments. And in an effort to keep citizens, give each citizen the opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns, we ask that you keep your comments as brief as possible and limit to five minutes. So at that time, I'd like to bring up Ms. McDonald, our county commissioner. She has some comments for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and council and citizens. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to come out and to say hello and to let you know that we are alive and well and open doors for each and every one of you for any way that we can support you. I'm here today because this is a part of my year-long tour to get through all the municipalities just to say hello and to let everyone know that I am there in the office. I can appreciate the long relationship that we've had from the city of Trotwood to where we are here today. And I simply want to, again, bring you greetings from my office and to share some documents with you that I think are going to be useful. This is the two thousand and twenty-five State of the County Impact Report, and we're working on our strategic plan for next year, and we'll be bringing those around or getting those around to you as well. I often tell the different mayors and councils that I've talked to since I've become a commissioner that I understand what this work is. And we've not had people at the commission level who have been mayors in the past, but I know the struggles, the challenges, the decisions, working with dollars and staff, and really working hard to give your community a sense of lifestyle that they want. And being at the commission, I want to make sure that my ear is open to what's important to you and what it is that you want me to support for you. And it really does matter, again, having been a mayor and sat in your seat before and a council member and sat in your seats. I do know the level of concern that people have, especially during these very challenging, difficult times sometimes for mayors and councils. But in the end, we're going to all get through this together by working together. And I want you to know, Mayor, you know this. You always have my ear. Amber, you know I am always here for you all, for anything and everything that I can do to support you. So after nineteen years in the city of Trotwood, I am on to another career path, and it's absolutely exciting. But I couldn't have done it without the relationships that I've had. I've had relationships here for a very long time, as well as from the relationships that I've had as being the mayor of the city of Trotwood, Ohio, from COVID-19 to a tornado. Those are very, very challenging times, and those were the times that you all were right there with us and supported us and helped us to get ourselves back up on our feet. And I'm hoping the best still for Trotwood, but I am very much so enjoying having this new opportunity. So do you have any questions for me?
I think we all certainly agree and appreciate everything you did for the citizens of Trotwood while you were mayor, because, I mean, you did so much with economic development and just revitalization that you did for Trotwood was just unbelievable. So it was noticed, and we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you. And I couldn't have done it without the friends and relationships that have really helped to build our community.
Mr. McDonald, we would love to see the county refund Edge. It was a tool that we used, not frequently, but it was a valuable tool. And when it was cut from the county's budget, I think it affected the municipalities and certainly in our area.
Absolutely. We do understand, and we have discussed those challenges that have gone with, you know, the changes that we're dealing with there with the budget. This year, we had gotten, we've taken a million dollars of that to give to the food bank. And I know that, you know, while these are very challenging times, we are still here to help businesses. So it may not be Edge, it may not be called that in the future, I'm not sure, but we will be here to help in terms of economic development. None of us can do this alone. It's just really wondering how things are going to pan out with the changes that we have in place right now. And nobody knows what those are right now. But I do appreciate what you're saying, and I will communicate that, too.
Any comments?
Okay, great, Mayor. Thank you so much. And I will share these pieces of information. I'm sure you all know that we have the Human Services Levy that's coming on, and I'll share information with that to you as well.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks again for coming tonight. Appreciate it. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Being none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to... Got to be quicker than that.
Sorry. We move fast around here.
All I want to know right now is, is the Mulberry issue going to be discussed tonight, decided upon or not?
Please state your name and your address for the record.
James Test. Last name is spelled T-E-S-T, just like a spelling test. I'm at twelve twenty-eight Greystone. Mayor knows I got a beautiful black dog called the Bear. He's a Newfoundland. But anyway, moving on. Will that Mulberry issue be discussed, decided upon tonight, or put off until October sixth?
It's in an ordinance, and it's in its first reading tonight.
Okay.
We're not going to really be discussing it. What we'll do is vote on whether or not to move it to the second reading, which would be the following meeting.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? It's open comment. If you want to speak on Mulberry, go right ahead.
My name is Marissa Bardinaro. I live on twelve oh six Foxcroft Court. My house sits on the corner of Mulberry, Hedstone, but our technical address is Foxcroft. So this development would actually be essentially in my side yard. I do have a lot of things to say, to be considered. We did this a couple of years ago. And I'll start with just saying thank you for the work that you guys do, for the community and the taxpayers. As someone that lives and works in this community, that has children, that attend these schools, as well as children and family members who work and coach sports in the district, and as someone that has participated in community organizations, and myself has sat on trustee boards, education foundation, athletic organization boards, I do have a lot of vested interest in this city, and I do appreciate the opportunity to be heard. I'll start by saying I understand household growth and all the financial impacts that come from that, but I do have some concerns regarding some neglected priorities regarding this Mulberry PUD development plan proposal. So they involve the negative impact on property values, traffic congestion, safety issues, strains on local infrastructures, the lack of amendments to this proposal to make this plan more agreeable, remembering again that we rejected this a few years ago, and there is nothing new that's changed in this proposal since then. And then finally, I wanted to just address the intimidation and bullying tactics by the developer. So as to my first concern, the negative impact on property values, this PUD plan, in many of our opinions, they're overpriced and kind of a glorified apartment structure that will ruin the look and feel of our neighborhood. These are not single-family houses. These are multi-unit structures that are crammed, proposed to be crammed into some already purchased land. We welcome the suggestion to build comparable houses that fit the surrounding neighborhoods like Copperfield, Middle Park, and Ashbury. As a homeowner in Copperfield, I'm concerned that buyers would not want to purchase my home if I ever went to sell it, when there's basically eighty-seven apartments crammed right outside of it. This is going to, again, create traffic issues on the main street to get to our home, as well as all the cars that would be using the adjacent streets as a throughway with kids playing outside. I just don't feel that that would be a curb appeal that people would want. I did bring some pictures of similar-designed neighborhoods, and you can see the crammed views from the neighboring city. So this is here locally. My next concern is the congestion and the potential safety issues. So the proposed design entails single-car driveways, so typically a second car is parking in the street. The average household in Vandelia has two cars. So if you consider two cars times eighty-seven homes, one car not parked in a driveway, that's a hundred and seventy more vehicles, of which are probably half in the street. Also, the lack of yard space is concerning. Parents, pet owners, I'm sure would agree that I don't know many people who would want to spend that type of money for the cost of one of these townhomes for residents where their kids or pets really don't have any safe room outside to play. In these pictures that I'll share, you will see a similar development, the lack of a front or a backyard. It just gives some perspective to what this really looks like. And these examples beg the question, you know, would a couple really, if they have kids or they're planning to have kids, want to pay two hundred, three hundred thousand for a single-car driveway and a lack of safe place for kids to play? The further fear is that at these prices, they either set empty or they become rentals. And again, comparable homes like these already erected between Mulberry and Stone Quarry would be more desirable. The traffic concerns, and I mentioned the amount of cars, the only options to exit Mulberry are to turn to a high-travel Peters Pike, cut through Copperfield, to get to Stone Quarry, or dump out on to already very busy Dixie. So with two cars per household, another hundred and seventy-four cars, and zero additional traffic lights, and again, unless they cut through Copperfield to get to Stone Quarry, no one has conducted any traffic pattern studies, no one has provided plans for lights to help the flow of traffic. And Mulberry is already a very windy road dumping to heavy traffic roads without lights. What this shows is a lack of care, concern, or planning for our community beyond the build-to-make-our-money plan. There should be a plan for traffic challenges, and there is not. Another fun fact, also from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, less than three hundred houses would generate twenty-five to three thousand new car trips daily. So are we certain we don't need stoplights? My next concern, the strain on local infrastructures aside from the roads, what about the schools? We should be concerned that the schools already show signs of overcrowding, and they currently have staffing needs. Based on other approved developers, there's already been an addition of numerous homes being built at the landing by Helkey Elementary and numerous more by Dema Elementary by Brown School Road. There's also a proposal for more PUDs around Dogleg. So there's about seven hundred and fifty new homes, either approved and/or being proposed. So in that spirit, how many more kids are going to be part of these seven hundred and fifty new homes that will funnel into two elementary schools and one pre-middle school that are already using curtains to separate as walls, to make more classrooms? They already have open needs for more teachers and staff to make more classes. And consider the third, fourth, and fifth grade, pre-middle school of Smith, who's already using multiple outdoor trailers to house all of the current third graders. What impacts do all of these kids have at Morton or even the high school, or even our already existing school busing issues? We have four teachers and coaches in our family. I know firsthand the conditions of the elementary school options. Additionally, we've even considered the potential for overburdened police, fire, EMT services. We're talking hundreds of more households, residents, and...
Can you please try to expedite this? We're well over our five minutes at this point. I know you've got a lot you want to say, so I'm trying to be as polite as possible here.
Sure. No, I understand. I'll just sum it up by saying, you know, the proposed changes in the neighborhood, the communities that would be impacted overall, I think it is a detriment to the character and infrastructure of our homes and our neighborhood. And we oppose the lack of planning for the described challenges with this PUD concept, and we hope that you hear the voices of your voters.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to... You can give those to Mrs. Schwartz, and then she can distribute them to council and staff. We would need to keep a copy of those for the record, so that...
Hello. My name is Steve Ash. I have been a resident of Vandelia since nineteen seventy-six and been living in the Copperfield neighborhood since oh seven. So I've seen a lot of developments over the years, and I think the proposal for the eighty-seven condos in that eleven-acre area is going to be very congested. It's going to cause a lot of traffic. I travel Mulberry at least four times a day. I see people that are constantly running, cycling on the streets there, back and forth because the traffic is not too bad at this point. But I can see where some kind of sidewalks or something would have to be put in. I would like, hopefully you would consider that for those people, because it's not just our neighborhood. It's also the Park Place neighborhood next to ours, the Ashbury Farm neighborhood as well. I can see the fact that a lot of congestion with the traffic. It is a very winding road. A lot of the points that she brought up are absolutely true, that I would like to consider the fact that... Mr. Mayor, I believe you work for Keller Williams, so you're a realtor. You understand the value of property. The fact that these being placed there, I think, would have an effect on our neighborhood. I just had a house next door to me to sell a couple of weeks ago. It was sold for over four hundred thousand dollars, and I can see that the value could be going down. I would think that a lot of the people in that neighborhood would have concerns in regards to the value of their homes going down. And I do. And in the congestion on that street, I can see sound barrier issues with putting any kind of homes or apartments or whatever in that area. You're right up against seventy there. A lot of noise. I don't know who builds those things, but there's going to obviously be costs there, costs in maybe putting sidewalks in along Mulberry. Whether that can be done or needed to be done, that would be something that you would have to determine or the builders or something at some point. But I'd just like to put my two cents in in saying that I'm not in favor of it. So there you go.
One last thing before you go. Can you please state your address?
It's twelve hundred Greystone Circle.
Okay, thank you. Remember to state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, I'm nervous. I've never done this.
We're all nervous.
It's Ashley Wright, and address ten ninety-eight West Alkaline Springs Road. I just want to bring to your attention, I'm sure you've heard this, but the water bill issue in Vandelia. The last two months, I've gotten bills for three hundred dollars a month. I've seen people that have had as much as seven hundred dollars for one month. This is just, to me, it's just unacceptable. I mean, just, there's other, I tell other people that live in other cities how much my bill is, and they think, oh, that's for a quarter. And I said, no, that's for one month. And there's people in the city that lived on fixed incomes, people that are just living off of social security, and this water bill to triple in just two years' time is just, it's crazy. So I'm really hoping that this plan can be looked at and something can be done about this. So that's it.
Just to be clear, did you say that you had an enormous water bill like this last month? Was that...
The last two months.
Last two months. Have you reached out to the Public Works Department, the Water Department, to let them look into it?
Yeah. And all they tell people is to have a plumber come in, look at your toilets and your, you know, all your plumbing and all that. They're telling everybody that.
Can you see where your water meter's at to see if it's moving while you know you're not using water? Could there be something dripping or leaking during the day when you're not there that...
No. No, we've had a plumber out, and I know multiple people that are in the same position.
I did ask her...
Are you looking at the number of gallons used? Is that, are you comparing that from month to month?
No, I haven't looked at that, but...
I did ask her to bring in her last two months' bills. I don't know if you were able to, to see if we could get that from someone to give your address, because we weren't able to get that, so that someone could look into it for you officially before she came in and we could get it.
Do you, did you do the Eye on Water app?
No, I don't have the new meter yet.
We have an app in the city. And you can get on there at all times and look at your water meter. My first thought would be not just the two months that are high, but in comparison to when it was lower. And you need to look at your water usage, and if it's abnormally high for no reason, that means something's going on with your water. It's leaking out somewhere else. Now, if you're using the same amount of water, that's different, but...
It just, it doesn't make sense to me why this continues to happen with several people in the community. It's not just me.
That...
I mean, when two years ago, I was paying...
The water bills have gone up. There's no, if, no doubt about it.
Tripled.
But in your situation, if it's from a month where you had the same amount of people living in your house, using, doing the same amount of thing, you're not doing a swimming pool, are you watering outside? Something's creating a higher water usage, maybe, potentially. And that is the first thing you'd want to look at.
Right. But it doesn't make sense. Why is everybody's going up?
Well, it's not, I mean, everybody's went up. There's no...
Yeah, tripled, though.
But in your case...
Which is not right.
That's not an accurate statement.
I can get bills and provide them.
I think the issue is, is there's a discussion on social media that's not necessarily accurate. And that is that not everybody's situation is the same. And so individual residents need to contact city staff if they are having issues with their water bill. And so city staff can assist in trying to find out what the problem is for that person, because it could be a water, an older water meter that has failed, and they're doing estimates. And that, then there's a catch-up period where you have to pay a difference based on the estimate. It could be a result of, yes, the new water meters that have been installed are more accurate, and people are actually being charged for the water they have, they are consuming, which may not have been what has been happening for the past year or more, because the water meters are failing. That's why the water meters are being replaced. So it's not an issue of everyone's problem is the same. You know, I live in a house where my water bill is not, has not increased at all. Okay? But, you know, the usage, it's a new water meter. I mean, it's increased by the rates, but it hasn't increased, you know, it hasn't tripled, but it's increased because of the rate increases. But the water use is just the same. The meter is new, and it's working.
The rate increases are outrageous, is what I'm saying.
Well, the rate increases are here for the next couple of years because of delayed infrastructure improvements that we are catching up on. And there is no other way around that right now, because we can't afford not to make the improvements to the water system. If we do, then we have unsafe drinking water for the public. We have EPA mandates. We have a wastewater treatment plant that's going to have over a hundred million dollars worth of improvements, and we have a share of that cost. So water rates have been increased. They are going to increase again in January. We're going to continue to reevaluate that based on what we are seeing as our known expenses, that we have to keep a water and sewer fund that's solvent. We cannot have a water and sewer fund that we can't, you know, afford to provide safe water and sewer services to our residents. So the actual issue with your water bill, though, I would say you have to speak with somebody in the city offices. Mr. Cron or Mr. Alt House can put you in contact with a staff member who can assist you to find out what your specific problem may be at your house and try to troubleshoot that.
That's what I'm saying. It's not just me. It's everybody in Vandelia.
I know, but you need to look at your situation for you right now. Take the last six months' bill or a year's bills and look at what has changed, besides the rates.
I just hope that you guys can reevaluate it, because people are living off of social security, paycheck to paycheck. These people can barely afford to...
We honestly have. We've looked at it numerous times, trying to, trying to see what we could do. But Councilmember Folick's explanation is a fact that we have to deal with.
And also, keep in mind, it's a utility bill. It's not just your water. It's sewer, trash, and everything has been increasing. So a lot of times, people will associate that with their water, but it's not just their water.
Right. Yeah. Okay. All right.
We'll get with you following the meeting if you're wishing to stay, and we'll get your information so we can follow up with you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
My name is Cheyenne Storey. I live at two eight seven North American Boulevard, and I will say it is about the water. And I've never done this, so I am nervous. So I have the last four months of my statements, and I have an eighty-eight dollar, a seventy-seven dollar, and then my new meter was installed. And after that, it was two hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. So I called the Water Department, and they said what you said, the whole catch-up, the new meter wasn't installed, and they need to catch up and whatnot. And I was like, okay, that makes sense. And she said that it should go back down to its normal rate of sixty to eighty or so dollars. And this month, my bill was six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. So I looked at my Eye on Water app. I've been told that I might possibly have a leak, because I've asked for advice from people of Vandelia on what to do if other people have had the same problem, and so on. Some people are having the same problem, some people are not. So I know it's kind of base by base. I don't believe it is a leak. I don't know if it's the meter or what it is. I do have, I can pull it up, but it's not necessary. Last Sunday, it said on Eye on Water that I used twenty-five hundred gallons of water, and I did the math, and that is equivalent to filling up twelve roughly hot tubs full of water. And I was not home from the hours of eight AM to seven PM. So I don't have a pool. I don't water gardens. I take a shower in the morning, maybe run a load of laundry. We don't make a lot of dinner. That's none of your guys' business. But like, I'm not doing dishes. I'm not using excess amount of water. I'm using very minimal water. And the very next day, we used three hundred and thirteen gallons of water. Same thing. We were gone from eight AM to seven PM. So I know everything's case by case, and I did contact the Water Department, and she is having someone come out tomorrow to look at it. But I guess I just want to know, like, is there a bigger plan of action for people that are struggling, or do you guys just want everyone to kind of reach out to the Water Department and kind of figure it out on their own, if that makes sense?
Well, I think if you, if you have an extreme water bill like that, definitely reach out to the Water Department, because a lot of the bills that have been going out over the past number of months have been estimates. Sometimes those estimates are low, and when they're low, there's that catch-up. That's when people get the large water bills. But on the other hand, there's some people that are actually getting credits on their water bill, because they were overestimated.
Right.
But those aren't the people that go to social media and post about it. So if there's a problem with your water, I would definitely get with the Water Department. Let them check your meter. I mean, if it's using twenty-five hundred gallons and you're not even there, your Eye on Water should tell you that.
Right, which I did check it.
If you mark your meter and write down exactly what your number is, and it's moving, and you're not there, then water's going somewhere once it goes through that meter, and that's in your house.
Right.
And we got to find that.
So people have been telling me that I probably have a leak, but in my knowledge, and that's some to none, because I'm not a plumber, but if I would have a leak, wouldn't it be like consistently over-usage of water and not an excessive use of water, and then extremely low use of water within twenty-four hours of each other?
Common sense would say that, yes.
Right. So...
She's not a plumber either. She's not a plumber either.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. There might be a number of things we'll check. I mean, you know, of a plumber, but if you would have like toilet continuously running for that time and then the next day it wasn't running, I mean, that, that could be a potential issue, but we can certainly check it when our employee comes out to check your meter.
Do you guys want these? I know, um.
I would take them to the Water Department and let them evaluate it.
Okay. I can email them to you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Did your Eye on Water, um, say there were no leaks detected?
Yes, it says there's no leaks detected or anything and my water usage was actually down this month and it was the previous month and it was up like three to $400. I didn't do the exact math, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a high water bill too, but I ended up having to replace two toilets after I realized that they were slowly leaking that I didn't even know it. I didn't hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Robert Ballenger, Coolidge Wall, 33 West First Street, Dane, Ohio. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, here on behalf of the property owner for the Mulberry Road PUD. Want to address some of the comments we heard tonight. One of them being the traffic concerns that we've heard from the citizens as well as some of the council members. I'd like to submit into the record a traffic study letter from our traffic engineer, which the conclusion generates, the development will generate less than 200 total trips during peak hours, which is below the threshold for traffic studies required by the City of Vandelia, is my understanding. So can I give this to you?
Who did the traffic study?
Uh, CPSO engineer by the name of Robert Matko. With respect to the development as a whole, as I mentioned during our last meeting during the study session, this development is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. It is the highest and best use for this property. The developer touched on potentially putting in single-family homes there. That's not economically feasible given the makeup of the property and the location. So I'll take any questions you guys have and representative of the developers here as well if you have any questions.
I don't think I have any questions unless anyone else has.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Going once, going twice. All right. All right, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Turn it over to Mr. Alt House.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three items just to cover this evening. First of all, on Thursday, this Thursday, the September 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, the Vandelia Division of Police will host their annual open house at the Vandelia Police Department and Justice Center. There will be several stations set up for demonstrations along with complimentary food. All are welcome to attend. Number two, October is Fire Prevention Month and for that, the Division of Fire is hosting their open house. And that will be on Sunday, October 5th, from noon to 2:00 PM at Fire Station 1, located at 8705 Peters Pike. And then finally, our 2026 Budget Workshops. Council has established two budget workshops to be held in the basement of the municipal building. Workshop number one will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Budget Workshop number two will be held on Monday, October 20th, 2025, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, breaking for the study session and council meeting and then returning to the workshop after the council meeting if needed.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Alt House, um, I know the city is working, getting back to the water and sewer rates of utility bills. I know the city is putting together a presentation based on all those numbers. Is there, would you like to speak to that of what's coming and when they should be receiving some of that information?
Sure. So in our final publication of My Vandelia Magazine, which is due out later this year, we're going to have a little more information detailing all the fees, where all of those fees and, and funds go to. A lot of people think it's just the water, but there is a considerable amount of expense and cost that goes into replacing a lot of aging water mains and water pipes that run throughout the city. A majority of those are more than 50 years old. We have seen a considerable number, number of water main breaks over the last several years. So one of the things we've recognized is we need to replace and upgrade that infrastructure to make sure, as council's mentioned, about making sure we have clean water for all of our residents. So there'll be additional details coming out in my community newsletter detailing all those things that we're investing in to make sure we have that sustainability for long term.
All right, thank you. All right, we have no action items, old business, and we have no resolutions tonight. We do have a ordinance in its first reading. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development preliminary plan, I'm sorry, preliminary development plan and associated zoning map change on land generally located at 3330 Mulberry Road.
Thank you. Mr. Alt House?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, DDC Management, requests a planned unit development and preliminary plan for the property located at 3330 Mulberry Road. The proposal includes rezoning the 11.36 acre parcel from agricultural to PUD planned unit development. If approved, the pa, the property would be developed with eighty-seven new townhomes. On August 26th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll have to approve ordinance 2522 in the first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve ordinance 25-22 in its first reading. Are there any comments or questions?
Just a quick comment, just to reiterate what we mentioned in the council comment or citizen comment in response to the resident's question. Tonight's vote is not necessarily an approval of the plan, but it's an approval of the ordinance in the first reading to get it to a second reading, which is required under our code for zoning issues. So it's a formality of a vote to forward it to the next meeting and then a second reading of the ordinance will be considered at our October 6th, sixth meeting. So, thank you.
All right, thank you for reiterating that. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll? Hold on.
No.
The second reading?
It's the second reading.
Call the roll?
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver? Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have ordinance 25-23 in its first reading.
An ordinance approving a PUD major amendment and revised final development plan for certain parcels in the Foley and National Road Planned Unit Development District owned by Bo Townsend Lincoln.
Thank you. Mr. Alt House?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Sean Olson, of Vancon, and on behalf of Bo, Bo Townsend Lincoln, request a major amendment to the Foley and National Road PUD. The proposal would allow for significant structural alterations and a change of use for the property at 55 Foley Drive. If approved, the property would be converted to a new Lincoln dealership. On August 26th, 2025, the Planning Commission voted three to zero to recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance 23-23 in its first reading.
Twenty-five dash twenty-three.
Mine says 23, 23.
All right, there's a typo, but it is ordinance 25-23 in its first reading. Can I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve ordinance 25-23 in its first reading. Are there any questions or comments? Call the roll?
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Hertz?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero. We have no ordinances in our second reading or emergency ordinances and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions where we have the Civil Service Commission, Commission meeting minutes of July 24th, 2025. Next, we have the August 2025 bill listing in the amount of $4,066,675.77 along with the monthly expenses over $25,000 and the monthly purchase card detail in the amount of $21,102.4. And lastly, that brings us to council comments and we will begin with Mr. McDonald.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alt House?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
I almost want, keep wanting to say Chief Alt House. Uh, Councilmember Fars?
None this evening, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
I just want to, um, speak for the record that, um, just as a reminder that I don't really appreciate being told what is the best in whatever use by someone that is outside of our city. And I think that that's up to our decision and I don't like being told how I should be voting or why or how and then I have to give excuses or reasons for that. So I need to be, just remind that this is our community and, um, our citizens still have a voice and I just feel very offended by that.
Councilmember Dugan?
Um, I'd just like to thank the people who spoke and gave their opinions and their worries and I appreciate anyone coming in to speak. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lewis?
None this evening, Your Honor.
All right, that brings us to Councilman Folick.
Just a couple of things real quick. I want to acknowledge and, um, I guess give a shout out to some, a few highlights that were included in, I believe, the blue letter this last time or may have been the previous one. But it involves, um, what I consider some successes within the Parks and Recreation Department. Castle Hills Pool closed the 2025 season and had over 14,500 visits for the summer, which was an increase over last year. And I think that the, the contract with, um, Swim Safe and some changes that we've made to emissions policies there have, have proved successful. So congratulations to the staff on a successful summer season that started off kind of wet and rainy. Also, at the Recreation Center, um, the August attendance for visits at the Recreation Center has, in my opinion, exploded. There was a 16% increase over August of last year and typically use at the Rec Center is lower in the summer months. So, um, you know, kudos to staff and for the programming and services that are being offered at the Recreation Center where we saw almost 15,000 visits in the month of August. Um, and then also not to leave the golf course out. But again, with the, the start of the summer starting off wet and cool, not the perfect, um, summer for golf, but the August numbers were still above the 100% cost recovery for the municipal golf course, notwithstanding the capital expenses that we are investing there, but operation and maintenance. So we're going five years running of keeping that above 100% cost recovery. So kudos to the golf staff. Um, and the last thing I have is a request, I guess. If possible, I think, you know, we, we've had a lot of projects in the city this past summer. Several, um, infrastructure projects with, with water and sewer mains, road projects. The Robinette Park renovation that took a while and we had delays. And I know that a lot, we, we, we put a lot of things out on social media. And that does capture some of our, some of our community. And I know we do notifications like for the road projects where we send a letter to the residents in those neighborhoods that are being affected. I think it may be advantageous that if we can establish a page on the website that has a unique URL, so whether it's project updates or whatever it is. And that is a depository for the city staff to provide updates on that on a regular basis for these big projects. And, you know, some of that stuff's already contained in the blue letter, so I don't think it would be that, it's not creating a whole lot of extra work. It's just putting it somewhere else that might be a more, a little more accessible to residents. But I think using that unique URL, you know, if, if, when we send those letters out to residents or if we do that on a constant basis, it will become kind of a landing page for residents to be able to go to, see that if, you know, where we're at on a road project, is it expected to be another week? Is paving occurring this week? Because even though we push that stuff out on social media, there's still a lot of residents that aren't getting information from social media. And I think that, you know, if residents in a certain neighborhood know that over the next six months as a water main project is going to be in their neighborhood, that they can revisit this page and get an update of what's happening. I just think that can improve, um, improve the relations with the residents and the communications, especially some of these projects that, you know, seem to have had delays. And I think we can kind of get in front of it and explain why there are delays and get that out there. So just a suggestion as we move forward with new projects. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right. And the only thing I would have is again, thanks everyone that came out tonight and for your comments. And also special thanks to Montgomery County Commissioner Mary McDonald for coming tonight. We appreciate having you. With that, this meeting is adjourned.